In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is this? Got this wrong. What's Raleigh's last name? Give me one second. I just, I know you didn't Raleigh. I don't, she, she, Raleigh Steinauer. I couldn't say his last name.
Um, I don't have any, I don't think. I don't see any.
I don't think we did.
No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, just call the roll.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Mr. Howe?
Here.
Ms. MacIver?
Here.
Mr. Mettler?
Here.
Mr. Oniaka?
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Steinauer?
Here.
Mr. Thomas asked to be excused. He had some family business that he needed to take care of at the last minute. Mr. Pataznak and Chairman Arcini.
Here.
So, doesn't look as though we have any minutes or a resolution, so we'll move on to the discussion of the amending the Renaissance 2000 Redevelopment Plan. Who wants to take us through this?
Mark?
Uh, yes. Well, this is, we've gone over this before. This is the site that's at the corner of Somerset Street and Juliet. There's a proposal for a Wawa with a, with filling station. It's been reviewed and endorsed by the Redevelopment Agency. It's, they've been declared the designated redeveloper. The ordinance would change the ordinance to allow this development within that zone, subject to certain specific standards. Those standards, again, we went over at a previous meeting. This is the official referral. It's been introduced. So, this is the official referral from the council to the planning board. The one thing, and it has been brought to my attention, that there are two, now that I see them, pretty obvious typos. It says minimum lot coverage of 30 percent and minimum impervious coverage of 75 percent. Those are both supposed to be maximum. I don't think any town has a minimum coverage requirement in any zone ever. So, those are, those are supposed to be maximum. Otherwise, it's exactly as discussed previously by the board.
No, I did not. Okay, so we just need to make a motion that this is consistent?
Yeah, and you have, you do have a resolution in front of you. I would suggest, if you're positively, positively inclined to recommend passage of the ordinance amended to point out these typos.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve the amendment to the Renaissance 2000 Redevelopment Plan with the corrections of the minimum to maximum for lot coverage and impervious.
Second the motion.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Steinauer?
Yes.
Ms. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Ms. Oniaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
I will note for the record that Mr. Pataznak arrived at 7:38, so he is here.
He heard the discussion. Mr. Pataznak?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. Okay, so we have two hearings tonight, first of which?
Did we adopt? We need to adopt the resolution. If you want it, we need to do a separate?
Okay.
The first was the motion. The second will be the adoption of the resolution.
Gotcha. Okay. Then I move that we adopt the resolution memorializing the same.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Steinauer?
Yes.
Ms. Oniaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Pataznak?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes. So, our first hearing tonight, VGS Holdings, PLN 15-00003, carried from March 4th.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is an application on behalf of VGS Holdings, Inc. My name is Peter Lanfrid. I represent the applicant. One bit of housekeeping before I present the application, which should be a fairly quick one. This is an amended application. There was an original approval in this matter that was granted in 2006 under docket number When this new application was filed, I guess somehow it was given a new planning board docket number, I think for the sake of continuity and for, so we don't have any problems down the road, this doc, we should be carrying forward the original docket number because it is an amendment to that plan. And I don't want to get into a situation where for bond releases or other things, there's a bunch of different docket numbers.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make the administrative change for that, so we don't have issues with sign off and everything else, Pete.
Thank you. As I said, this is a fairly small application in the context of the entire application. In 2006, we appeared for an expansion of a existing facility, pharmaceutical facility on Cotton Tail and Campus Drive. That project entail the demolition of two dilapidated houses and the construction of 67,900 square feet of additional new space along with parking. Part of the plan included the outdoor storage or outdoor placement of certain mechanical equipment, and this application is to amend that part of the plan. I have two witnesses, which I will call. One is the site engineer and the other is the planner to justify the variance. If we can have the site engineer sworn in, please.
Please stand. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And can you state your name and spell your last name and provide your address for the record?
George. John Palus, P-A-L-U-S, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, C-O-M-O, New Jersey.
Okay. John, what is your occupation?
A principal dynamic engineer.
We'll get there.
Okay. And you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you were responsible, along with your team, to prepare the original site plan for this application and the amendments that we're here for this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you indicate to the board what changes we are proposing? And you brought with you this evening and have mounted an exhibit?
It's sheet 2 of 4 of what was submitted to the board. So, I don't know if it needs to be marked.
Okay, referring to A1, can you describe the property very briefly, where the building is and where the proposed change is, is being made?
Certainly, for the purposes of my testimony, Cotton Tail Lane is at the top of the page, and that would be on the west side of the property. We are at the southeast corner of the intersection with Campus Drive. The existing portion of the building was at the northern portion of the site. The expansion of the building, which has been constructed at this time, extends further toward the south where the residential homes used to be.
Okay. And as part of the original approval, there was an area designated for the placement of mechanical equipment to the exterior of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was along the west side of the building facing toward Cotton, Cotton Tail.
Okay. And can you show that to the board members on the board or point it out?
Certainly. That would be along the top of the page to the west. At the time of the original approval, there were three separate concrete pads that were proposed. There was a fenced-in area around the, those structures, and then landscaping was proposed on the west side between the fence and the right-of-way of Cotton Tail.
Okay. And what are we proposing this evening?
Certainly. It's a fairly minor proposal and, quite honestly, something that nobody in the public would ever see. It's essentially connecting or an extension of that concrete pad where the chillers and the dusters were located on the west side of the building. They want to essentially extend it so that if you walk between the pads, you don't have to walk into grass areas. Really for efficiency of maintenance of the property. And at some point in the future, if they were to add a piece of equipment due to the demands of their business, that they would simply be able to rest it onto the building. They wouldn't have to come back to the board to add impervious coverage at that point and also avoid disruption of the fence and also the landscaping.
Okay. So, the, the original plan that had the three pads, the width of the pads were?
It's consistent with what was originally approved.
Okay. And so, what we're doing is basically connecting all of the pads with concrete?
That's correct.
Okay. In the original approval, there was fencing, and we're going to continue to have the fencing along the property?
That's correct. It'll be fencing with privacy slats. There's one modification that happened during construction. I believe that one of the revised plans addressed that the fencing that's located at the north, the existing fencing at the northwest corner of the site was actually offset 10 foot from the property line. In order to maintain a consistent fence line, we have shifted the fence to be 10 foot instead of 20 foot along the new addition. So, now the fence is consistent along that 10-foot property line. The landscaping has all been essentially the same location. We shifted a little bit of landscaping around simply due to the doors or gates into that enclosure that were requested by the fire department. And due to the grading, there is, we do provide some stormwater management, a trench drain to pick up the additional impervious coverage, which is very minor. So, the slope on the west side is about 3 to 1, and I've checked with my landscape architect, and he's assured me that the evergreens will be fine in that slope.
Okay. And in reviewing the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application, there were some minor comments. We can address all of those comments. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And if Mr. Haley has any specific questions concerning the landscaping and the need for either more or less landscaping along that area of the property, we would be more than happy to meet with Mr. Haley to resolve the landscaping issue, correct?
Absolutely. Well, you've, the plan is consistent with what the board had previously approved, and his testimony addressed the comments in my report.
Okay. Again, if, just in case you had any other comments, we'd be happy to have our people meet with you. Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Does the board have any questions for this witness? Okay. Seeing none, why don't you go to your next one?
Mr. Cannoli?
If you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your professional address for the record?
Yes, it's Mark Cannoli with MC Planning LLC. The address is 236 Garden Place, Robbinsville, New Jersey, 08691.
Mr. Cannoli, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've worked in the industry for over 20 years, both in the public and private sector. I've testified in front of several planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey and New York.
You're accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cannoli, this application is, was testified to by Mr. Palus. Entails the addition of some additional concrete along the area where we have mechanical equipment. The township ordinance allows 60 percent of lot coverage. The original approval granted a variance allowing 65.8 percent lot coverage. We are now seeking a slight increase of 1.3 percent to bring it to 67.1 percent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. With respect to?
And you're familiar with the site and the subject property. Is that correct?
Yes.
And can you indicate to the board your opinion as to the grant of that variance?
Okay. In preparation for my testimony, I reviewed your M1 light industrial zoning, your existing 2006 master plan, other relevant sections and land use elements of your various amendments. I focused on mentions of your building coverage and your impervious coverage sections. I did notice that the 2006 master plan did mention that all of the various impervious coverages were reviewed and that any increase beyond those maximums would require testimony and the proofs under the MLUL 40:55D70C2, which we're going to put on the record now. That's to demonstrate that there are unique features on the site, the site is, that there's a practical hardship to provide, that there are purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced, and to finally prove that the so-called negative criteria can be satisfied and that there is no substantial detriment to the public good or an impairment to your zone plan and zoning ordinance. So, as Mr. Lanfrid requested, my opinion would be, one, Mr. Palus described the site, described that the site is surrounded by office uses to the north, east, and south, existing warehouse to the west. It's just south of West Canal Road, I believe, just south of the canal and south of 287. It's in a heavy industrial, non-residential zone, as was mentioned. The site was formerly occupied by residential dilapidated, unoccupied structures for quite some time. Those structures have been removed. The building is well underway, and I think the structure is almost complete. With regard to the variances, it's clear that in May 2013, there were three concrete pads. It was testified earlier that there's a need to connect those pads for more efficient maintenance of the exterior ground-mounted mechanicals. The variance is increasing by 3940, or 3,940 square feet. That's roughly 1.3 percent more in coverage. It's my opinion that that's a very minimal increase. I mean, that's six ceiling tiles wide, as you know. It's 12 by 360 feet long. So, the existing pads or the proposed pads are now being connected for, for maintenance purposes. In terms of the proofs, I'd offer that the site is irregular in shape. It's long and narrow in sections, and the lot depth is narrow and shallow. The purposes of the act that I think would be advanced here is purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and welfare. I don't see any public welfare being impacted by this proposal. In fact, I believe that by allowing the applicant to connect the concrete pads, we're allowing a more efficient maintenance and a long-term plan if there were a need in the future for an additional piece of equipment. You're not going in and damaging existing evergreens that were well-established in five years from now. We're knocking down an existing fence to get your equipment in there. Second purpose would be purpose I, and that's to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civil design and arrangement. I know we often tend to use this one. But as Mr. Palus mentioned, there is a chain link fence that will receive privacy slats as well as a staggered row of evergreens with only one section of a break for emergency access. And those are Norway spruce and Colorado spruce, blue spruce, evergreens that grow very, very large in size and will provide adequate buffering of the site.
Will, will the grant of this variance, in your opinion, have any detrimental impact on the zone scheme or zone plan?
Okay. As we mentioned, there's no impact to the public good. And as I mentioned earlier, I don't see any substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinances. In fact, these types of uses and types of development practices are common in the industrial zone and the surrounding properties that surround our site.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Any questions from the board for this witness?
Pete, I have a question. The, that pad that's going to be installed in the front may be for future equipment? The reason I'm asking that is, is because if you put equipment on it, you're going to have to come back for variance because it's going to be in a setback, right?
The equipment would be, we may have to come back for the variance. Right.
I just want to point that out, that you're getting for the pad, but if you're going to, if in the future you're?
Right. And we may not need it, but at least we have the pad in place, and if we do, we'll come back. We understand that.
Yeah, and that's, I just want to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Any other questions from the board?
No further discussion. I make a motion to open it to the public.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to comment on this application, please come forward?
Seeing no one coming forward, Mr. Chairman, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, Peter?
No, I'm done. I would respectfully request that the variance be granted. It is a de minimis deviation, and I think the reason for it is, was very well explained by our engineer and planner. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Subject to the condition agreed to by the applicant, compliance with all the professional reports.
Yes.
Correct.
Thanks.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Steinauer?
Yes.
Ms. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Ms. Oniaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Pataznak?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So, our second hearing tonight is VM Point LLC, also carried from March 4th. And Peter, before I do this, I wasn't here that night, and I didn't listen to the testimony.
You missed a stirring presentation.
I'm sure I did, but I know that it was capably handled by SEAL. So, I won't vote, but I'll just listen. That's all right.
Fine.
We do have a quorum to do.
Yeah, I think we just should confirm who's eligible to vote.
We have five eligible to vote.
Which are Mr. Pettit, Mr. Chase?
We have Mr. Ch, Councilman Chase, Ms. MacIver, Mr. Mettler, Mr. Oniaka, and Mr. Pettit.
Okay.
Did I call you twice?
No, I think it's Mr. Pataznak that was here.
No one's missed one.
Oh, the parking.
The parking.
Yes, yes, yes. He's, you're right.
Okay. All right. Very briefly, we were here on March 4th. On March 4th, we presented testimony concerning the construction of a new 20,000, 22,000-square-foot medical office building on Veronica Avenue, adjacent to another office building that was previously approved by this board, almost identical, both in size, shape, and with the parking variance that we obtained a few years ago. The variance that we were seeking was for 100 parking spaces where there are 148 spaces that were required. At the previous hearing, we presented the testimony of the architect, of the site engineer, and went through all of that, and we also presented some traffic testimony. There were some questions raised by some of the board members concerning the parking spaces and the study that was done, and there was especially concern because some of the other medical offices on Davidson Avenue were to have perceived?
Veronica.
Veronica Avenue were to have a perceived parking problem. As a result, we agreed to go back and double-check our accounts, and I also have some additional testimony from the owner concerning the operation, which I think may shed some light on the building. So, I'm going to start this evening by calling Mr. Yaroni as my first witness.
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your?
Seth Yaroni, Y-A-R-O-N-I, 22 Robertsville Road, Marlboro, New Jersey, 07746.
You can have a seat, Mr. Yaroni. Mr. Yaroni, you are a, one of the principals of the applicant VM Point?
Yes.
Okay. And you will be the one who will be constructing, owning, and operating the building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. First of all, can you give the board the benefit of your experience in constructing medical buildings, owning them and operating them?
Yes. In the past, I owned several office buildings. One of them is right in town, 1543 Route 27. Others are in East Brunswick, in Woodbridge, that kind of facilities. I construct them, I build them, and I manage them.
And most of the facilities that you build are for medical offices. Is that correct?
A large portion of them.
Okay. And the one on Route 27 here in Franklin, how big that you at one time owned? How big was that building?
I believe that was a 32,000-square-foot office building.
Okay.
And again, I believe with the exception of one tenant, all the other tenants were all medical.
Okay. And you were also the person who was, who was building the building next door to the subject property?
Correct.
Okay. And that one you're building for?
That one I'm building for somebody else.
Okay. And in the buildings that you owned and managed, what has generally been the parking ratio that you have sought to have approved for construction of the buildings?
Usually anywhere between 3 and 1/2 and 4 seems to be parking that we ended up having.
Okay.
For example, 1543, I believe is 3.7, if my memory is correct.
That's per thousand square feet?
Per thousand square.
Okay. And now, you were present during the discussion that we had last month and the concern that the board members had about the adequacy of parking. In managing buildings, and obviously, if you're going to own the building, your goal in owning the building is to rent 100 percent of the building?
Absolutely right.
Okay. And in doing that, if there is a parking problem, what happens to your space?
Well, then it's difficult to rent the last space if all the parking is taken.
And how do you manage that the users within your building will be able to adequately park within the confines of the building?
Well, we usually find out how many physicians they have, what their hours, and we try to match it to the property. We mentioned the lab corps at the last meeting, for example, about seven years ago or so, they were trying to become tenancy at the building on Route 27. At that time, we decided not to lease them the property because of their heavy use, both in terms of parking and wear and tear on the common element within the building.
So, if you have a medical use that involves a laboratory that, or laboratory use, that creates a problem for parking?
Usually, yes.
Okay. And if the board were inclined to grant the parking variance, would you agree to a condition in your applicant, in this site, to not have any laboratory facilities on the subject property?
I would probably not have a lab there regardless.
But you will agree to that condition should it be necessary?
Yes.
And again, we mentioned last month that we don't have any signed users for the subject property because usually the doctors don't sign on until we know the building is approved and ready to be built. But have you been talking to users, potential users?
Yes, and I believe that last time we discussed that we have discussions with a sleep lab. We have discussion with some other physicians, some of whom are going to only work in the building several days a week because they have other locations, but right now, it's all open.
Okay. And based on your experience in a building of this size of about 22,000 square feet, how many physicians do you envision occupying that building?
I can't give any firm answer because I don't know who I'm going to have, but I envision somewhere between eight and 12 physicians.
Okay. And that doesn't necessarily mean eight and 12 tenants, but basically eight and 12 physicians within the confines of the building. Fine. Thank you very much.
I just have one question, if I may.
Go ahead, Jim.
The problem last time was basically you didn't know what your tenancy was going to be. You had no idea at that point. You were talking about this and that and the other thing. The major issue being the sleep lab and the architect or the engineer who was ever testifying about the parking requirements, the tenancy seemed to be leaning on the fact that that would be your tenant, therefore, the parking wouldn't be that required, people would have a different show-up time and leaving time and all the rest of that. We're still at that same point. I mean, I don't know how it worked, and I don't remember. I should remember, but I don't remember how it worked in the other building that you're building. I think you had a better fix on your tenancy than when you came, but you got a variance for parking on that building. And I don't recall this certain testimony, so that's really where we're at. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I will refresh your recollection, Jim. The last application, again, the building was the same, the parking was the same, but there was a defined user for the first floor, and there was testimony from that defined user as to their parking requirements, which justified the variance. In this case, we are relying on our traffic consultant and empirical evidence of other evidence of other buildings, and we'll present more testimony that we think that the parking is adequate. And again, the testimony of the owner that the users will be compatible with the parking.
It's almost though, it's almost you had one building where you kind of had a fix on who that first tenancy was going to be, which gave you a reasonable... This building is being, basically, I don't want to insult the builder, but it's a spec building.
Correct.
Being built on spec, neither he nor I nor anybody else knows exactly what that situation's going to be.
Correct.
How do we, and I'm not trying to put a burden on him to limit his ability to rent what he needs to rent. I just want to understand how we're going to control that. He's explained it, how he's done it in the past. If he gets a tenant that's going to take up more spaces than he can provide, he's willing to, you know, he won't take that tenant. So, I don't know how we can put that into an ordinance or how we can put that into an approval, if an approval is forthcoming.
Yeah.
Saying that, all right, here's a condition. You have to meet this condition. And I don't know if that's even fair. I'm just asking you to think about that.
Yeah, and the...
Coming from...
And we talked about it, and I think, and again, you'll hear from Mr. Kennel again this evening and also from our planner, that basically the numbers, that we think the building will work with the parking that we have, provided there's no laboratory there, because the laboratory is one of the bigger problems. And the problem with this ordinance or any ordinance, this building could be converted to general office if it doesn't work as medical, and your ordinance for general office is one space for 250. And then we have plenty of parking. So, I mean, in every situation, when you're building a building on spec, you have no guarantee of who your tenants are, but you, as he says, you try to fit them in so that you can rent your space and the tenants could be happy there. Because if the tenants are not happy there, they're going to leave, and that doesn't accomplish anything. So...
Usually, though, it's the opposite. Usually, we're getting a spec building and we don't need all the parking we can provide. That's usually what happens, and we bank it, or we have an overflow spot. We don't have that here.
Well, you're assuming you don't have that here. Mr. Kennel is...
Your ordinance says it's 148, okay?
And...
Rescue for 100.
Yeah.
That's a lot of spaces.
Well, that's assuming, again, the question is...
Roll assuming.
Well, no, again, the question is based on empirical evidence. Does a, what your ordinance is basically at a ratio of four point, or, I'm sorry, 6.7 spaces per thousand. Is that standard in the industry? Is it not standard? You'll hear testimony, and again, the testimony on the other buildings along Veronica, we have the counts as far as how many spaces per thousand. And I think if you look at it in that context, where we are is consistent with or greater than what is in a lot of the buildings along that area and a lot of medical offices in the community. Again, I don't want to testify, you can hear from these guys, but...
Okay. I have another, just one more question on that same thing. Suppose we don't get the sleep center. How does that, what can we accommodate there then? Let's say we don't get that use, which is kind of a light use as far as the parking situation is concerned. Then what happens?
Well, again...
Parking without that?
His...
If it became doctor suites, let's say?
Yeah, his opinion as the owner is that there's more than adequate parking. You'll hear from our traffic consultant again that there is adequate parking. And again, I've done enough of these applications. I mean, there are certain types of medical offices that generate more traffic than others.
I know.
Pediatricians, if you have an emergency care center, those generate more traffic.
Or a laboratory.
Or a laboratory. On the other hand, you can have a psychiatrist or a psychologist that has one patient, one staff member.
Exactly.
And again, it's really his job more than your job to make sure that his building gets filled. I mean...
Yeah, but we're still the planning board. It's still part of our job too, okay?
Right.
Still part of our job.
It is part of your job, but...
To be comfortable with that, we, this goes ahead, at the township or the people who live here are going to get disgruntled by the fact that we allowed something to happen that doesn't work. Okay, that's part of our job.
And I understand that, Mr. Pettit.
Okay.
And again, I mean, you know, fortunately, here you have somebody who has experience in construction, knowledge, and also a knowledge how tenants interrelate and work with each other. And, you know, so it's, well, it's your job, it's also his job to make sure his building works so he can pay his bills.
Yeah, that would be important.
Yeah.
Just, if I, we're going to hear from the traffic engineer.
Yeah, I understand.
We need to hear what he's going to say. You had mentioned that the topic of conditions and whether it's fair, and what I would say is it's absolutely fair to place reasonable conditions. They are asking for a variance.
Yeah.
So, if there are reasonable conditions that you feel would ameliorate that variance, then you are fully entitled to impose those conditions you feel are reasonable.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. Hilli.
Anybody else from the board have any questions to this witness? Because if not, we should move on. Ted?
I'd just comment, I think the real problem, or if there is a problem, what it's likely to be is doctors who run late on their appointment so that patients pile up and occupy the parking. And I don't see any way we can control that, or even you can control that.
Well, interestingly enough, I mean, yeah, to some degree we can't, but doctors sometimes learn that they lose patience if they have them piled up and they're waiting. I think last month either Mr. Miller or Mr. Thomas mentioned that they stopped going to somebody because of the fact that there was no, it was Mr. Thomas, because there was not adequate parking and that he had to, had an order and waits. So, sometimes it's self-correcting because patients will go elsewhere.
Okay, let's, let's hear from the traffic expert.
Ted?
Just one, one question for the owner. You own this now. You could sell it to someone else that doesn't have a like mindset, just gets the first potential client who's a medical person because the rent is higher, and they may not be judicious in making a selection or turning people away. Is that possible?
Sure, it's possible, but then the tenants are not going to stay in the building. You know, the doctors want to be able to see their patients. At the same time, doctors also have to adjust many times the way that they stack their patients. Doctors like to come to the office and have six exam rooms with patients waiting for them for the last 45 minutes, and when they come in, they can jump from one to the other. You know, maybe only need four rooms with the patients waiting, you know, and they learn to adjust themselves. The same way, in essence, the previous building that we came for on 59 Veronica, the doctor that is going to occupy right now the first floor might not stay there forever. He might decide to sell the building to somebody else and have a different physician move in. The fact that on day one he is the tenant doesn't mean that he's going to be the tenant forever.
That's a very good question. And just, if, if at the end of the day, the board is inclined to grant the variance with certain conditions, those conditions will run with the land. It's not to this particular owner. It's to this site and will run in perpetuity for him, and if he sells to somebody else, they'll equally, so if you say no lab use, that's not just applying to him, it's to other future owners in the future.
No other questions?
Okay, if not, then you go ahead to your...
Mr. Kennel?
Chair.
Mr. Kennel, you were sworn in at the prior hearing.
Yes, I was.
Remain under oath. Just for the record, your credentials have not been detrimentally affected since last you appeared before the board?
That's correct.
Perfect. Thanks.
Mr. Kennel, you did testify at the last hearing. You heard the discussion at the last hearing concerning some of the concerns that the board members had concerning the sites that you related in your traffic study that you did in November of 2014. And did you in fact go back out to the various properties that were contained in your report and reevaluate and reanalyze those sites?
Yes, and again, as I testified last month, it was based on a report dated November 19, 2014, and it included parking accumulation counts conducted in 2013 and 2014. I went back out to all those sites last Tuesday, April 7th, and did a number of observations during the morning from 9:00 to 12:00.
And why, why did you do it from 9:00 to 12:00?
Because generally, from my experience, that's usually the peak activity for doctor offices. I mean, and based on the data that we had collected previously, where we had collected parking accumulation recordings throughout the day, it was found that the morning period was the highest parking demand.
Okay. And what did you find when you, first of all, on what day did you go back out there?
It was Tuesday, April 7th.
Okay. And when you went out there on Tuesday, April 7th, what did you find as far as the counts on those same buildings?
I found that, again, the parking demand was consistent with our prior recordings, again, where the peak parking demand was, it was a maximum of 4.3, and that was at 77 and 79 Veronica, where the back-in-motion building is and the LabCorp. And given the fact of the comments raised at the last meeting, I took a little bit more attention at that site to just understand the dynamics. And I think it's important to recognize that during my recordings, there were available parking spaces, but they may not have been convenient to the, to the patients. There were at least 15 to 20 available spaces, albeit on the western end of the property, a little bit far removed from the LabCorp. The other thing that works against LabCorp is between, LabCorp is a second building removed from Veronica. Between LabCorp and Veronica Avenue, you have back-in-motion, and there are approximately 15 parking spaces that are reserved for back-in-motion only. So, again, it doesn't allow for an even well distribution of parking for the LabCorp tenant who then is, and whose entrance to the building is closer to back-in-motion. Whereas, the building that is proposed by the applicant has a building centered in the site and have parking around the entire building and provide for good distribution of parking so that it's convenient to any of employees or patients that are coming to the site. So, it's my opinion, based on those observations, that, again, the LabCorp situation is really a situation of available parking immediate to the LabCorp and people's desire to park as close as they can rather than taking advantage of available parking spaces that are onsite that still provide a peak parking demand of 4.3. And it does think it's important to note that even on that site, they do not meet the, the ordinance requirement. They're at approximately 6.17, not at 6.7. And all the other sites that we studied, including 49 Veronica, 51 Veronica, 75 and 81, have a parking supply of less than five per thousand. And their demands were in the range of three to four parked vehicles per 1,000 square feet, whereas on this, the site that's subject to this matter tonight, we're providing a parking ratio of 4.52. And as I testified earlier at the last meeting, based on Urban Land Institute standards and ITE, they recommend a parking ratio of approximately 4.0. And again, I feel it's appropriate for a building of this size that's going to have multiple tenants. There are occasions where you can have a single practitioner in a, say, converted house or a smaller building, where the 6.7 may be more appropriate. But for a building of this size with multiple tenants, common space, it's still my opinion that the 4.5 will be more than adequate, even if we don't, even if the sleep center is not a tenant in this building.
Thank you. And just to refresh the board's recollection, you did look at 49 Veronica Avenue, and that building is 22,400 square feet, correct?
That's correct.
And, which is basically the size of our building?
Yeah, and they have 94 parking spaces.
And they have nine, and you've examined that site on how many occasions over the years?
At least four or five times, and the peak demand is around 59 to 60 vehicles on that site. So, approximately 2/3 of the supply.
Okay, and again, just for comparison, we have 100 spaces for a 22,000 square foot building?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and in reviewing your, your counts, I mean, it appears that the, the other building at 81 Veronica Avenue, which is 25,000 square feet, which again is comparable to our building, was approved, and how many parking spaces are at that site?
They have 94 parking spaces.
And then when you've examined that site over the course of the numerous times you've been there, what has been the average parking peak demand?
The peak demand is approximately 3.1 vehicles per thousand square feet, and they have a supply of 3.76 per thousand.
Okay. And when we use the term peak demand, what does that mean?
That means that's the, the highest recorded number of vehicles that were observed during our recordings that go back to 2013, include 2014, and most recently, last week.
So, in conclusion, and I'm going to just focus on the two buildings, even though you looked at more than the two buildings. The two buildings that are comparable in size to ours were approved with less parking spaces than we are proposing, correct?
Correct.
And every time that you've been there, the parking demand has been significantly less than what was provided, that is, the 94 parking spaces?
That's correct.
And those buildings were able to function adequately with those numbers?
Correct.
Thank you.
Excuse me, would you please identify? I don't know the numbers of the buildings. I know where, I know where back-in-motion is, and I know where LabCorp is. There's a rather large facility, I think it's university medical radiology or something like that. What number is that?
That would be 75 Veronica. That's the larger building.
That's the largest one. That's the one that has the majority of the problems that I'm talking about when it comes to parking. That building has the problems. And LabCorp used to be in that building. Now, LabCorp moved to its own facility, which will relieve some of the problem at, what is it, 75?
Correct, at 75.
University Radiology?
Right.
What was the counting there? Did you do a count on that one?
Yes, we did. And there's 190 parking spaces. They have a parking ratio of 4.4 as their supply.
Right.
And the peak demand was 4.14, or 178.
So, that's right on the margin.
That's right on the margin, but again, it's, it's still less than the 4.5.
All right, by, by a percentage, okay. That's the one that has the, when we were talking last week or last time you were here about, that building in particular is the one that causes the majority of the parking problem on that block. I use, even Mr. Thomas, who's not here, but he, he went to, LabCorp was the building he was talking about. He used to go to LabCorp in that building, and then he quit because you couldn't park.
Well, I, I think the thing you have to also consider there, this is, it's a larger building, a larger parking field, so it's greater walking distances and...
Oh, yeah, there's no question.
And whereas we have a smaller building, and in my opinion, we have a well-laid-out parking field that surrounds the building, so it's convenient to employees and the patients.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying that when you get to 4.1 or 4.5, we're talking nothing, basically, because people, first of all, they don't park where they're supposed to, and there's a whole lot of other things that go on there. And you have a number of handicap because that building is so big. There's a lot of parking that can't be used unless you've got the sticker on your car. So, that's counted in the count, but it's not usable for you and I, or for me it is, but not for you. I have a cane and a sticker.
But there was a pretty good utilization of the accessible spaces when I was...
All right, thank you, thank you.
There's another problem with 75, which maybe your owner ought to be aware of. Because it's near wetlands, all these parking areas there to the rear of the buildings are attracting geese, and this is the time of the year they nest.
There's quite a few of them, I know.
My husband was there tonight, and he got chased. And these geese are very vicious.
Yeah, they are.
Now, he's tall and strong, can make it to his car with no problem, but you have a lot of people who are not that fortunate.
Would rather stay away from it, I understand.
Yes, so I think discouraging geese from nesting on your grounds would...
He's probably not going to be...
Be a, a good warning. Oh, gosh.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question about occupancy. So, all the sites that you went to, is it your opinion they're fully occupied?
It appeared that most of them were pretty close to full occupancy, if not fully occupied. Again, I just kind of walked myself into the lobby and looked around. I didn't actually go to every single door and see what the utilization, but it appeared that they were pretty much fully occupied.
Okay, because certainly that could change. Then, is that maximum occupants, maximum need for parking, if half the floor is empty, then...
I, my sense is 75 Veronica was fully occupied, the 77, 79 Veronica, which is back-in-motion, and the LabCorp, there was also a neurology office right there. So, I, on that site, which appears to be the highest concentration, and again, because of the LabCorp-type use, that site was fully occupied. That I can state on the record.
Thank you.
Anyone else for this witness?
Just one quick question. What, what's the ITE number?
The ITE, based on their recordings, is that they have 3.53 is the average demand they've recorded, and then as far as the 85th percentile, it's 4.25. And Urban Land Institute recommends just under four for, for medical buildings around 25,000 square feet.
So, those are the industry standards, and then, and I'm just looking at, Councilman Chase has the, your report on here that has the actual parking demand ratio. It seems to me like Urban Land Institute's standard and the ITE are kind of right in that range of what you've actually experienced on that street.
And that's consistent with my experience throughout New Jersey, where we've done other research. The only deviation, as I stated earlier, if you have a single practitioner in a smaller building, then the rates are higher. But when you're in a building of this size with multiple tenants and common space, this is consistent with my... this is consistent with my findings over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other witnesses?
Yeah, I need to present some planning testimony, so I will call Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
I think they're getting some restrictions. I think they're getting some restrictions. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record, please.
My name is Kevin O'Brien, O-B-R-I-E-N. My address is Madison House, Suite B, Madison Avenue in Raway.
Mr. O'Brien, you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And for how long have you been so licensed?
20 years.
Okay, can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
He's accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman.
Assume if you're licensed in the state of New Jersey, you're doing something right.
Or wrong. Mr. O'Brien, you're here tonight to present testimony in support of a grant of a parking variance, as indicated by Mr. Kennel and, and the previous testimony. The variance is because we are proposing 100 parking spaces, and there is a zone requirement of 148. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And not to go back to your qualifications, but, but have you also served as a planner for municipalities over the course of the years, and do you currently serve as a planner for municipalities?
Over the course of the years, I've worked at about two dozen municipalities and counties. Currently, I have five municipal clients.
And as part of your job, you are involved in drafting ordinances for municipalities, and you review the ordinances of the municipalities?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And part of the ordinance obviously has parking requirements, correct?
Yes.
And first of all, can you indicate generally the municipalities that you work in, what is the average parking? Well, first of all, is there a differentiation in most of the ordinances between medical and non-medical uses?
About half and half.
Okay. And when there is a differentiation between medical and non-medical uses, what do you normally see or have you seen regarding the, the requirements for medical offices?
It ranges between 100 to 200 to 100 to 250.
Okay. So in your experience, is that consistent with the testimony of Mr. Kennel?
Yes.
Okay. in doing your review or your analysis for the support of this variance, what factors did you consider, and what are unique characteristics of this application?
The medical office building that is being proposed here is an allowed use in the zone and one that benefits the public good by providing medical care to township residents and area residents. Of the 62,000 people who live in Franklin Township, 8,500 people, or 14% are over the age of 65. An additional 1,100 people, or 1%, are living in some type of group quarters and are disabled. So over 15% of the population of the township is either disabled or elderly, which certainly increases the need for quality medical care and close medical care. The current ordinance does require one parking space per 150 square feet for medical offices. The 150 square foot number is a gross number and includes all the common areas in the building, elevators, hallways, restaurants. In comparison, a general office requires one space per 250 square feet. Two of the leading national authorities, the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Use Institute, use different standards for medical office buildings, as you've just heard in testimony. And that range goes between four and four and a half spaces per thousand, or one to 200 to 250 square feet. The traffic report that you've read and has been testified to already states that 4.52 spaces will be provided per thousand square feet, or one space per 221 square feet, which is in the range of both of those national authorities. The traffic report also studied the nearby medical office buildings on Veronica and found the parking demand ratio that you've already heard described in testimony, ranging between 2.3 and 4.14, showing that the proposed parking is above the current usage. The owner has indicated that there will be no medical laboratory on the premises and is willing to accept that as a condition, so that will certainly reduce the amount of traffic and parking.
Now, in, in determining whether a variance should or should not be granted, you review the township master plan?
Yes.
Okay. And does the master plan give this board any guidance with regard to this application?
Yes, there are two goals in the 2006 master plan, which I think apply to this application. And the first one is, quote, "Encourage commercial and industrial development in areas with access to major regional highways and in established areas, with the goal of locate major employment and traffic drawing uses in areas where they will least impact residential neighborhoods." And then second, "Provide adequate community services and facilities to serve the needs of all current and future residents in the township." And that goes on to say, "Provide adequate services to fit the needs of township residents." And I believe this application supports those goals by locating this development in an area near other medical uses on an appropriate roadway with access to the area road network.
Okay. You also examine the purposes of the municipal land use law, and do they give this board any guidance?
Yes. In Chapter 40, colon, 55D, dash, 2 of the municipal land use law, purposes of zoning are listed, and I believe three of them apply to this application. The first one is A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Providing a medical office building certainly promotes the public health, if not the safety, and if not the general welfare. Item G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. New Jersey citizens do need medical care, and that is being provided here. Last, item I, to promote a desirable visual environment, and this new building is going to be in a cluster of similar buildings and will add to the streetscape and be aesthetically pleasing in, in this area. So I believe this application is consistent with those passages.
Okay. The other thing that we must demonstrate to the board is that the application will not have any negative impact. Do you have an opinion as to whether this, the approval of this application with the variance that we are requesting will result in any negative impact?
In short, no. The use is allowed, as the board knows. This building is going to aesthetically complement the existing buildings along Veronica, providing a similar use. Parking is adequate, according to the testimony you've heard. The owner is not going to allow any medical laboratories in the building, reducing the demand. By providing less parking than is required or needed, the applicant is not placing unneeded impervious cover on the ground of this property. 50 spaces at 9 by 18 would cover over 8,000 square feet of ground, not including the dry files. That is a positive for the community in that this unnecessary impervious cover is not being placed on this property. This application also preserves the existing wetlands in the proposed wet pond, providing stormwater management.
Okay. Finally, have you reached a conclusion on this application and the C2 variance that we are seeking?
I have. That is, I believe that this application can be granted under the C2 criteria, and that is that the benefits outweigh the detriments. The proposed building is particularly suited for the site. The benefits include providing medical offices to a community where over 15% of the population is elderly or disabled, and reducing the amount of impervious cover that could go on the site. The application satisfies the negative criteria by meeting the goals of the master plan and the municipal land use law, and there are no identifiable negative impacts on any of the surrounding properties or the neighborhood. So I would conclude that I believe this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Brien. I have no further questions of this witness. Mr. Chairman?
Thanks, Peter. Any questions from the board for this witness?
What would the final parking ratio be now, if this gets approved? What would the ratio of parking be now? 4.1?
4.52.
4.52?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Make a motion to open it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on this application?
Seeing no one come forward, I make a motion to close it to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other board comments? And Peter, I think I would know your summation, but I won't take the words out of your mouth, so.
I, I will try to be very brief. Again, I, I'm sort of glad that we had this discussion and the issues that were raised by Mr. Mettler and Mr. Pettit and Mr. Thomas at the last meeting. It allowed us to go back and revisit to make sure we were doing the right thing, and I think the testimony you heard this morning, or this evening, based on the, on the recalculation or re-review of the counts, clearly indicate that the numbers that we are proposing as parking ratios are well within the parameters of what has been constructed in Franklin Township and what has been approved. I mean ironically, when we looked at, at all of these other buildings, although your ordinance does say 6.7, every other building that we looked at has been built at 4.5 or less. And by and large, based on what we've looked at, they work. So I, I think it does make, the variance is justified, and I think the planning testimony that the subsequent testimony of Mr. Kennel supports that, and I would respectfully request that the site plan be granted, and the parking variance be granted, and we would accept a condition of no medical laboratory, or no laboratories or medical laboratories on the subject property.
Would you accept a condition that basically says the present or future owners will control the tenancy so that the, so as to maintain a parking ratio of not, not more than 4.52? Because the gentleman said he would do that.
Yeah.
I don't think you can do it for future owners, because you have no control.
Well, if it's in the ordinance, the future owners, if it's in there, it becomes part of the lien.
Well, if what's available is 4.52, then in practice, they can't have the other four.
That's, that's correct.
He's going to control, if he gets a tenant in there that needs more, he's not going to accept a tenant. He's, he testified to that.
Well, that
If he gets a tenant, if he's not the owner anymore, which goes down to the question we had at the end of the table, how is that going to be controlled if he's not the owner anymore? He sells the building.
But, but the question, Jim, I, I think where you, where you have the disconnect is that I may have a user, or he may have a user that has a need of more than 4.52, and another user that may have a need of 2.1. So it, it's the average of all the tenants. One user may be more, and one user may be less.
The total amount of parking on the site, whether the user is me, or you, or somebody else, that the parking ratio
We are committed to 4.52. That's correct.
And, but we have to enforce it somehow in the future. It's okay for you to find, if it gets approved, that's fine. He sells the building.
And we still have four
Control the tenancy anymore, only if we're aware of it. Only if we're aware of it.
Well, I was going to say, you're, you're discussing a, an actual usage that generates a, because the 4.52
Every time we turn around, okay? Want to know the truth? We wrote an ordinance, and every time we write an ordinance, there's 10,000 people in here trying to tell us we need a variance. We don't know what we're doing, I suppose. We give away variances all the time. I'm not directing at this client. I mean, he's got his needs, he's already got a variance for parking on one building.
Yeah, but to be, to be fair, Jim, we have in the past looked favorably when we can reduce parking and impervious coverage. We have.
That's, that's not even an issue.
And it's, it's true that we give that variance, and we give it often because we've written the ordinance to be a little more liberal, and if we want to be a little more conservative, and we can get away with it for the use, oftentimes, we know that there's way too much parking. And this might be one of those circumstances, it might not be, but I mean, I, I think that's what you're, I hope that's what you're referring to, because I don't think we, I don't think we give too much away on this board, other than the positive aspects of it.
And the, the other thing, Jim, in, in looking at, at the issue, is if, if there is a situation where there is a problem with adequacy of parking, you have Veronica Avenue where there is no parking allowed on the street. Your biggest concern when you have parking, and especially with offices in areas adjacent to residential areas or other uses, where people will now say, "I can't park here, I'm going to go park on the street and impact residential uses." You don't have that here. You know, if they're not going, so it's a different situation. If I were to put a medical office on Hamilton Street close to residential homes, and I don't have enough parking, now I'm impacting somebody.
That's a whole different issue. That's a whole different issue.
But it's
This is a zone that, this is an acceptable use in the zone, it's where it's supposed to go.
Right.
There's no argument about that.
And, and again, I think the numbers indicate that the adequacy of parking in all the other buildings at the, at lower ratios work.
I'm accepting your testimony. The engineer came up, the main concern was the large building, and he, he came up with the numbers.
Yeah, see, I, I think this
All right, so the answer to my question is, you don't want that kind of condition, we can't do that. Okay, it's all right.
I don't know you can do it.
I don't know how you can do it. That's, that's the question.
I know, okay.
I, I think that, that some discussion around additional conditions, although it's helpful to know that there's no laboratory, I don't know what else could be like a laboratory, and I think we need to really think it through, because obviously, there's still some hesitation in the owner, builder, and overseer of the property agrees to that. I, I think we need to define it a little bit better if we're going to deviate from the ordinance, to think about all that could need more parking and make sure that it's not allowable in this space if we go with 30% reduction from our parking ordinance for medical. Or the other option would be, reduce the building size, put in more spaces in other areas and do some
Well, I, I think, I can tell you from, from practice, and what this board has typically done, is listened and to what you typically have in the uses, and they provided a lot of testimony as to that this parking is sufficient, and basically, it is almost self-policing because doctors and the ones who are going to go in there, who may have some, aren't going to be in there if they don't have six or eight. The, the one that we always have the problem with is like a LabCorp and those things. You, you just do, because they have a certain rush hour, we have these people come in at the same time. I think it's going to be
The testimony also included, not to interrupt, but other kinds of things, like some doctors like to come in, and I think the owner said himself, have six patients lined up, and that wouldn't be appropriate, because we wouldn't have the parking. How do we define that kind of doctor?
You don't have to define it, because it's, you're granting a variance to say that they can have what's permitted there. They've provided testimony that says that all the other type of uses that are there need less parking. We, in, in practice, when this board is granted, as Jim pointed out, numerous other variances for parking, I can tell you, of all those, I can't remember one where, even on the banked parking, where we've, dozens we've done the bank park, I think it was one that built them, and they built it because they needed some overflow parking once a year or something like that. So we've, we've never gotten to the situation that I'm aware of in my 10 years, where we granted a variance for this type of use, where I had then to go and say, "Now you have a parking problem."
Mr. Chairman?
And if I could comment as well, we, we are going to be working later this year into next year on the master plan. One of the things we're going to be doing is looking at the parking requirements. Frankly, I've heard enough over the last two hearings to say that we really actually need to look at the medical parking requirements. We've, we've had testimony from that in terms of Urban Land Institute and Institute of Traffic Engineers, and then we have empirical, you know, detailed empirical information from nearby medical uses on this very street that our parking requirement of one space for every 150 square feet is just much higher than what the, the, you know, what, you know, what actually exists and what these, what the Urban Land Institute and ITE says should be provided. You know, frankly, I think we need to look at our, I don't know if we really need to, in this situation, as opposed to other zoning standards, I'm not sure the 1 for 150 really needs to be the bible here. I think you, I think you really need to rely upon the testimony that's been provided. I think that's frankly, much more reliable measure of the parking demand here than our ordinance, and I don't think you ever heard me say something along those lines.
Bob, do you have a comment?
Oh, well, also, just that it seems to me unfortunate that I doubt if we could come up with all the possible contingencies that might affect this. You could have a up with all the possible contingencies that might affect this. You could have a perfectly quiet optician, and suddenly, someone on television says, "I always buy my glasses from Dr. Fredericks. He's the best man around." And you could have people coming from all over central Jersey. And there's no way you could plan for something like that. I mean, I don't think it's likely to happen, but there are some things that just can't be planned for.
Okay. Any, Ted?
Well, I just observed, of the five other medical office buildings on Veronica that you've surveyed, three out of the five actually offer less parking than is proposed here. And none of them, even the one with 6.17 supply ratio, they're not using up to 6.17. Nobody is up to the 4.52, which is proposed here. So let's get on with it.
Thanks, Ted. Any other comments? Okay, so, we've heard everything, so let's see where we stand. I can't make the motion because.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Didn't hear the first part of the testimony.
The application with the condition that the applicant has agreed to about not having any medical laboratories. And I'd like to comment that since he does have a sleep lab lined up, that's really going to offset any busier use that he might have come into the building.
And if I could just add, I believe at the last hearing, there were a number of other conditions that the applicant did agree to as part of the record.
Yeah, we would agree that they all be incorporated in the resolution. Thank you.
Should we have a condition to discourage the nesting of Canada geese, so that they don't discourage the use of parking?
Unless they're there for sleep study.
I got a good way to do it. Just don't mow the grass as much in the open hearing. Well, we have a motion. We need a second.
I will second. And by the way, I do have two Canada geese now hanging out in the horse pasture. I hope they don't stay very long. I have noticed them hanging out there.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Ms. Onyaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
And Mr. Pataznak?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So a couple of other things before we wrap up tonight. First of all, let me just say, I don't often point to this, but I've always had it on the agenda, is committee reports. And that's for people on this board who serve as liaisons to various committees to report back to us of anything pertinent to us. And sometimes, in the course of a meeting, we all want to get eyes or gloss over that. But if anybody does want to say anything that's pertinent to the board, based on their committee liaison experience to open space, or environmental, or whatever, please feel free to speak up at that time. Can we have a volunteer?
Yes. In fact, I was just out at Catalpa Farms Saturday, looking over the site that they're going to build the park on, with the cricket fields. Originally, there were supposed to be three stages, but because the neighbors objected, I understand that it's been cut back to two stages. And there will be the two cricket pitches, which are nice and level land right now, existing. And there is nice shrubbery between those cricket pitches and the homes nearby, that when I walked along the fields, I could not see into any windows of any homes whatsoever. And this is winter time with no leaves out. So I felt confident that that really wouldn't be a problem. Now, Phase Two, they're going to put in.
We did hear this on April 1st, by the way.
Yes. But, lost my train of thought. Yeah, picnic, well, pavilion, and, forgotten what else they're going to put in there. No, soccer fields were Phase Three. They've been discontinued. Basketball.
Lot, tennis courts.
Tennis courts, yes. There are tennis courts scheduled to go there. And they've downsized the pavilion. I have no problem with what's going in. I do think it's a bit of a shame, though, because the township does need basketball, baseball, soccer. We're in quite a bit of need of those fields. And it's really with regrets that that won't, that third phase won't be developed. That third area is going to be allowed to go back to its natural state, to woodland. But it really, I don't think it would have, we would repeat the mistakes that were made in Middle Bush Park with the way that the park encroached on the homes nearby, with putting in the berms. They took out all the natural trees and shrubs that acted as a high screen. And it's a shame that that's discontinued. I just wanted to let the board know that.
Thanks, Seal. Anybody else, anything for this time? But in the future, as people go, you know, and liaise to various boards, feel free to bring anything pertinent at this time. For work session, new business was the Hamilton Street review of the draft master plan. Do you want to, now, Vince tells me we looked at this before, but.
Yeah, we had a discussion, we had a discussion at the meeting. Yep.
I didn't.
I even, I even got down from here and sat down there and did a whole, did a whole show and demo.
It was like, it was probably a half, we were probably disgusted for half an hour, so.
So, no, you know, in looking at this, there's one thing that I want to, and I'll be brief, conditional uses. I have no objection to crossing out what's crossed out there in the, sort of the draft ordinance. Why would we cross out independent senior living facilities?
Well, that's basically, well, one of the main purposes of this effort is to try to encourage mixed use. So to try to encourage, and there's language in here that basically says, you can, you can actually have an independent senior living facility. In fact, we have one. The Genesis Development is frankly, independent senior living, but it's actually a mixed-use development, where they have office on the first floor and the residential above. So that would continue to be a permitted use. What we want to discourage is having standalone residential, higher-density.
Townhouses, apartments, and I totally agree with that.
Independent senior living really is, really is, it's really just senior, it's just another name for senior apartments.
So would that still be permitted?
That would be permitted, because it's mixed use.
Okay.
It has, it has office on the first floor, or if it had retail on the first floor, and independent senior living units above, that would be permitted. It just wouldn't be able to be a standalone multifamily development.
Okay. But could it be a standalone senior assisted living? Or would it need to have something else?
It would have to be mixed use under this ordinance.
So why would that, I mean, if it's really a standalone senior living, contributing no schoolchildren, why would it necessarily have to have a dual use?
Well, it's not necessarily a matter of, schoolchildren's not the only thing that the Hamilton Street District Advisory Board was looking at. I mean, again, they're trying to encourage, that's one of the factors, but we are trying to encourage mixed use and retail and office activity on the street level, as opposed to residential use at the street level. We want to try to encourage the development of Hamilton Street as a pedestrian-friendly Main Street-type environment, and having apartments and residential use at that street really isn't conducive to that. We want to have storefronts. We want to have things that will encourage people to get out of their car and walk up and down Hamilton Street. That's, that's the long-term vision for the street.
So, I mean, do developers do mixed use, senior?
Oh, God. Let me, let me tell you, in the last four, five months, we have met with seven different developers, four or five of them that will be here this year. And I mean, ones that have, are 50, 60, 70% engineered, and have spent thousands of dollars. We've heard, one of the reasons is, is because we've told them that we're discussing this, and the economy's gotten better, and New Brunswick is getting ridiculously expensive. So you put all that together, and the fact that, you know, that we have a Hamilton Street board that, as Ted can attest to, council just passed a budget last night, that there's going to be two additional police officers to help increase the police presence. Hamilton Street is starting to move forward, and the developers see that, and they're buying up property, and they're coming to talk to us about this. So they're all, they all want to do mixed use.
Okay.
They're going to make, they're going, they're going to be able to make money because of the apartment uses upside, and the retail will help foster that.
The only other question I have, and Mark, this is more for you. I'm sort of familiar with the, you know, the rezoning part, your illustrative map on, like, the page six of the draft ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
I'm familiar with the footlocker space. Can you just sort of like, briefly tell me why we would be rezoning the space further down on Franklin Boulevard, on the opposite side, and the space to the north there of, or whatever, northeast of Naaman Williams Park?
Yeah. Why don't I start first with the area that's to the northwest of Naaman Williams Park? That's a, basically, it's a contractor's yard. It's kind of somewhat unsightly. It's in the R7 zone. The thought here is to include that in the HBD zone, so that it could be, if the rear of the, I'll call it Johns Plaza site, is forested, there's a good amount of development potential back there, that's in the HBD zone. The thought is to add that to the zone, so that it could be included as part of a large-scale redevelopment eventually of that site. It wouldn't allow, it wouldn't be allowed to be developed by itself, because it has to be, the site actually has to have frontage on Hamilton Street. So the thought is to, you know, encourage that contractor's yard to be redeveloped and made part of a larger development that would front on Hamilton Street.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then as far as the going down Franklin Boulevard, this came out of a discussion with the Hamilton Street Advisory Board. This is, it's in the GB zone, which is general business. There is, I believe, a car wash there, some retail uses, and I think south of Ellen Street is a office for a contractor. The change to this zone would not create, I think that the car wash is actually already a non-conforming use in either zone, so it's not creating a new nonconformity. The other existing uses are, would continue to be permitted. What this, the thought there was to, rather than having GB, which is a, really a highway-oriented commercial zone, that these properties, long-term, be better used as, again, consistent with the Hamilton Street vision, retail on the first floor, perhaps office or residential above. It really is a continuation as well as the plan for Franklin Boulevard, which is part of the mixed-use zone in the redevelopment area. So it basically could connect the Franklin Boulevard, what is planned to happen long-term on Franklin Boulevard, and then connecting up to Hamilton Street.
Okay. Now, the footlocker site, the Office Professional now, there is an office building to the rear of that site, which I think is a perfectly okay use. A little further off, the character of Franklin Boulevard, that side is much more residential. It's not a terrible thing. I can understand the frontage where the footlocker is, and the Quick Mart, and the Subway, that that might want to change to HBD for anything in the future that might be done with that site. Why would you include the office building?
Well, really, the same reason. It doesn't actually, it's permit, the use is actually permitted in both zones.
So it's not a nonconformity?
It's not creating a nonconformity. It's really, with both the footlocker and that office use, really gives them really additional options. You know, for example, somebody, whether it's now or 10 years from now, perhaps they redevelop either, you know, either site on their own, or five, 10 years from now, or perhaps next month, based on the pace that the activity seems to be on Hamilton Street, maybe they develop, redevelop those sites together. But really, it just gives them more options. It is basically kind of the gateway to the Hamilton Street area, and gives them more options.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the things I had.
Question for Mark. One of the things I've noticed when you walk along George Street, New Brunswick, Route 27, Highland Park, Main Street in Somerville, when you've gone to the restaurants, and the good weather, they have the outdoor seating, the little patios and cafes. And it makes it very desirable. Will that be encouraged?
I think it's definitely would be encouraged.
Will there be room for it?
I'll look to Vince to find out what our ordinance currently says about that.
Well, what, yes, we would always encourage that. Because, and especially if we got restaurants, they typically like that. If you look at the Stage House, for instance, on, yes, Sophie's has some outside dining. And we would encourage it, and the restaurant types typically like that, because people like to sit outside. So yes, we would encourage that, and we would allow it.
It would be allowed. Okay, very good.
Yeah, but that's a good suggestion. I think what we'll do is, just along to what the plan is, or what the schedule is, I should say, with this. This is a draft. We wanted to, obviously, we discussed it in kind of outline form previously. You had said, put together a draft, master plan, and ordinance, and that's what we're doing today. Then there will have to be a hearing on this to actually adopt it as a master plan amendment, and then, and then you'll recommend the ordinance to council. What we can do between now and the hearing, we can look at the ordinance and look at ways to see what it says about
That it will allow that.
sidewalk dining. That absolutely is something we want to encourage.
Yes, okay.
Mike?
Ted?
Well, two things. One is the Penrose site, I mean, that is, which has been, has been in our fair share plan, and I think you've raised the question of whether it should continue to be. But I think we've made a commitment to the firm, if they ever go ahead.
We should, we should discuss that in executive session, Ted. That's, that's the subject of possible litigation, so we really shouldn't be having that discussion.
Not that site, but the.
Well, what I'm concerned about is, if we continue to include the Penrose site with the expectation of developing affordable housing, then doesn't this clash with removing independent apartment housing from the district?
Again, I think that's, that's more of an affordable housing issue than this. I think we really need to discuss that later in this meeting, during the executive session for the, for the fair share plan.
Well, all right. But, and with, with respect to what Seal brought up, just driving through Hopewell a couple times recently, well, to and from Stockton, I know there's a number of restaurants there that have a patio in front, which you see people eating there. It really makes you want to stop and eat there. Whereas, our Hamilton Street plan generally encourages building right out to the sidewalk. Should we have a provision that specifically allows restaurants to have a patio in front, instead of being built out to the sidewalk?
We can look into that. And I, it is a very good point. I think, one of the things that we identified in working with the Hamilton Street Group is the encouraging restaurants, encouraging high-quality restaurants is absolutely something that they want to encourage, for a number of reasons, including, you know, the proximity to Rutgers, the theaters, et cetera. So, you know, they definitely see that as something that is perhaps an untapped market on Hamilton Street. We do a Sophie's, and, you know, the thought is, well, maybe there could be other restaurants like that. So we will absolutely look into ways to encourage, and perhaps incentivize through the zoning, you know. encourage and perhaps incentivize through the zoning, you know, outside dining. So, we'll absolutely look at that, look to see what other towns have done to try to encourage that. Absolutely.
Yeah, I concur. So, what do we need to do about this tonight?
Well, let me just, real quickly, just go over a few things, because there were a few comments raised the first time. We wanted to make sure the boards are aware of the direction we're going. First, the main issue that was discussed, and kind of similar to what was just discussed on that application previously, was parking. If you recall, at the last time, last meeting, we were talking about trying, kind of two related topics. One was to perhaps have more flexible parking requirements for one and two-bedroom units because of the, you know, the possibility that those unit types have lower parking requirements than Rises requires, and also, at the same time, using that as a way to incentivize developers to provide more one- and two-bedroom units as opposed to three- and four-bedroom units for a number of reasons, but to try to attract millennials and people who may be oriented towards the hospitals and Rutgers. Instead of actually coming up with parking requirements, unique parking requirements for Hamilton Street, we've proposed language that would allow the board to review those situations on a case-by-case basis. So, the wording that Vince and I came up with, and I'll read that, read it to you, and it's in your draft, residential portions, and this is already in there, "Residential portions of mixed-use buildings shall provide parking in accordance with Rises." That's already in there. That's, again, that's the state standard for residential uses. But then it says, "The approving board may reduce the parking requirements for one-bedroom and/or two-bedroom units below that required by Rises, provided the applicant proves to the satisfaction of the board that a lower parking ratio is warranted based upon the expected occupancy of the development and/or other relevant factors. The approving board may place conditions on the approval of the development it deems necessary to ensure that the factors presented in support of the lower parking ratio remain in place, for example, deed restriction on occupancy." So, what this does is, this actually, in effect, as far as you're concerned, it really doesn't change anything procedurally. If they want to go below, if they want, if somebody wants to come in and say, hey, for a one-bedroom unit, instead of providing 1.8 spaces per, I think we can go with 1.25, they're still going to need relief from you, as they did in the past. So, it's really not going to change procedurally that before this board. We do suggest some language in this ordinance to this effect, because it basically tells the developers that, you know, that this is a possibility, and it does, it does prove to them that, and Vince and I, in our discussions with them, you know, they'll have to show unique circumstances, unique things that they're doing to reduce the parking requirement, prove why, either based, again, based on their expected occupancy or other factors, why they feel they should, they should be allowed to go lower than Rises. And then, again, similar to what you just did previously, you could place whatever appropriate conditions to make sure that stays that way. So, for example, if somebody comes in, and they, they're going to say to you that they're going to mark it and somehow restrict it to.
Students.
Students, for example. Well, you'll have that, you'll be able to have that discussion on a case-by-case basis, and they'll have to prove it to you, and then you'll have the ability to place appropriate conditions. So, we felt that was maybe a better approach than actually coming to you and saying.
Yeah, it's very.
1.5, and you know.
What it means is, it's not, it won't be a variance. It'll just be a flexibility.
Correct.
It's, technically, it's called a de minimis exception. That's what it's called.
Yeah, and.
Called a what?
It's called a de minimis exception. It's a term out of the residential site.
And you do this, we have this, we've done this with data centers. We have the note, we have the note in our ordinance already regarding parking. If there are certain uses that aren't specifically mentioned, that the board has the ability to look at that use, and it's not a variance, and we do it all the time with the data centers, where it's not actually a variance, but we grant it to them as a waiver because of that note. So, we've done this type of thing on other occasions. We just want to make it a little bit tighter so that the board has the ability to impose restrictions such as a deed restriction if someone's doing a student housing, and it gives you that flexibility, and it also, developers get a little antsy when you tell them they got their variances, because they have some bad experiences with some different boards. When you tell them that the board's going to make the decision, and they could say yes or no, but it's a waiver instead of a variance, they're much more likely to come in and take a chance. They feel a lot more comfortable with that, because that also shows them that the board is more willing to work with them versus just say, these numbers. And to be truthful with you, trying to come up with an actual number that would work in a million different situations, as was pointed out, it's almost impossible. We'd have to come up with 100 different numbers. So, it was easier to put this flexibility in and let the board do what they do best and make the determination.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, that seems reasonable. I mean, if there were lots of different possibilities for that medical office building we just heard, then there's 10 times as many possibilities for what could go on here.
Is the plan for Hamilton Street, does it include any area, parking areas that are actually parking areas? I'm thinking, if you go down to Lambert Village, you go down to Hopewell, you have those, those towns with beautiful main drag, great restaurants, and all kinds of retail establishments, that most of the time, there's a parking, there's one or two areas that you park, and you walk the street, or you don't. You don't try to pull it in front of the place. You can't. Especially if you want to eat on the riverside, you've got to walk down the street, you got to some of the restaurants that are on the river. But there's a place, there's a place that you can park. It's a municipal parking facility.
I know where it was.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I've been a number of.
I don't know what Hopewell is.
But the point being, are we doing that on Hamilton Street anyways? Is there any plan of doing that, and where would we do that?
Well, the answer is not yet, and I think the reason is, there really is not a parking problem yet on Hamilton.
When you're talking to developers, you're getting bombarded now. I mean, we've got to think about that somehow, because they can't all park on the street, and everybody, you know, if a guy wants to put a nice upscale restaurant.
Yeah.
For like, parking somewhere.
Don't we have a parking fund?
We have, we have, there is a, there is a parking fund. We haven't had, we haven't had the development yet.
Well, I understand, I understand.
So, you know, but it is, it is coming, and the Hamilton Street, and the advisory group, and Franklin Township, that is one of the issues that we're going to have to keep a very close eye on, you know, where, you know, as of right now, we haven't had that development. You drive down Hamilton Street, there's plenty of parking right now. I mean, sure, there's some places where there's minor crunches here and there, but by and large, there's no issue. So, we're going to have to monitor that. There is, as the developments come in, if they take advantage of the payment in lieu, the fund will grow.
Oh, I know, but it's the same old dilemma. You have the goals in taking place, or you're building up the fund, but you still don't provide the parking.
Yeah. I think the problem is, as of right now, it's a little too early to try to figure out exactly where.
Planning ahead.
I know, and that's, and that's what we'll do as these developments come in. As of right now, April 15th, 2015, we don't know exactly where the parking need is going to be along the mile-long stretch.
Yeah, that, that's really, that's really the key. The real key is, is that if this was your typical downtown, where it was three, four, or five blocks, we would, we'd have to look and say, we have to do this here. It's a huge mile-long thing, and that's something that needs to be looked at. It may, and if, if all these, if all this stuff happens the next two or three years, two years or a year and a half from now, we may be at that point, if everything keeps progressing the way that it's at.
Yeah.
But it's a good question, and to Jim's point, if that has to happen, you'd want to identify where you'd want it, and, you know, secure the land who's ever going to run it, or is the township going to, going to run it through a parking authority? I mean, I don't know what the answer to these questions are, but let's not plan to figure out where we can put it when we don't have any more land left to do it.
The guy's already there. You probably have to exist when somebody starts moving in.
I think it's a point that we need to identify.
But Jim, as you know, developments take a while to happen, you know, from, you know, we've been having meetings with developers on a very conceptual level, probably months before they actually come before the board. It takes them up to two years to actually build. We'll start to get a sense of where the developments are happening, what the densities are, what the parking requirements may be, and, you know, if there's a cluster of some, and we can say, hmm, okay, there's four or five developments in that few-block area, we may have a parking crunch there.
What's the feeling of the, of the association, or the other?
That the Hamilton, that the Hamilton Street Advisory Board.
How are they feeling about that situation? Is there, is other areas, you're thinking out loud, and we don't know yet, but we know we're going to need it at some point. Other places where it could be put, is the land available?
Again, as of right now, it's, I mean, it's only been the last, frankly, the last few weeks that, I think the word has gotten out that we're looking at this, and looking at the zoning, and we've had a number of people come in on a conceptual level, you know. There's not enough information to say. Last thing we want to do is, let's say, acquire some site, build 60 spaces, and all the developments are happening half-mile away. You know, obviously, as.
That isn't the issue at all. It's just, the issue is, you have the linias, you call it the dogs parking, with the contractor's yard in the rear. You know, you have another place, we took, I think, next to where the development is on Hamilton and Franklin Boulevard, we did take a lot. It's off of Franklin, it's back behind there. I don't think we're using it. It's just, it's there for future parking. That's the kind of thing I'm talking about. We need to know, have an idea.
No, we, well, crossing thinks it's there for their.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know they do.
Not anybody else's.
Yeah, I know, I understand, but that's what I'm saying. It's going to end this one of these days.
Then the overall plan, I mean, as of right now, the overall plan, at least from the zoning perspective, is that the residential need to meet their parking on-site, and that that's what we've done in the past. That's what this ordinance is going to continue. There is some flexibility here, but again, that's going to be on a case-by-case basis. At the end of the day, we're still going to meet their parking for the residential on the site.
Now, we say we want commercial, or slow.
And that's already permitted.
Yeah, I know, but that's what we're saying. We want that.
But the flexibility really is for the commercial, because it's a Main Street-type environment. It's typical to have parking, public parking, either on the street, and if there's a need in the future for surface spaces here and here or there, it'll be dependent upon where the developments occur and where the parking needs are. It's just too early at this point to determine exactly where that's going to be.
One thought I have is that we already have an example in Voorhees Station, where they were very constricted in space for parking, and what they did basically was, all of the, the residential has parking on the ground level and residential above, and then the storefronts in front. So, this is a way it can be done.
That's actually a good segue into what Mark's going to talk about, lot coverage.
And I would also comment, recently, I was in California, I think actually it was Menlo Park, or Palo Alto, but you've got El Camino Real, which is sort of the equivalent of Hamilton Street, and some shops and things going up the side streets, but then in the middle, the sort of rear of the block, between the side streets, you have municipal parking lots, and use those to patronize the shops or restaurants or whatever.
You're trying to encourage people to walk, too. That's, you want them, you're walking in front of these facilities, especially shops. And a restaurant, they have a destination. If you have good upscale retail stores, you want them to walk in front of them. You've got to look at your, your frontage sketch with the big windows, along the structure you want.
Yep.
And you've got to step by walking, step by driving, so.
So, the segue that Vince was talking about, in terms, we have, one of the concept sketches that we've been discussing with the developer involves underground parking, structured parking. And in that development, the proposal that we presented last month was, right now, the coverage requirement, the building coverage, is 40%. We proposed to go up to 50%. We're not recommending to change that. We're recommending you stay at 50, because that, we felt that's an appropriate standard. But that standard really is based on the assumption, frankly, that the parking is going to be provided through surface lots. We talked briefly about coming up with perhaps some other standard, if they're going to do underground parking or under-building parking, perhaps we could come up with a standard and allow a higher building coverage. We basically decided not to do that. We figured, let's just keep with 50. If a developer comes to you with some different scenario, and that's what variances are for, unique circumstances, and they want to propose 60 or 70% or so, I don't even recall exactly what he's proposing, or may propose, that that's, they're going to have to present that in the form of a variance, and you'll get the chance to, and make your decision whether you feel that a greater building coverage could be approved than, you know, higher than 50%. We just didn't feel that, you know, again, not knowing, it'd be kind of arbitrary to come up with some other standard. You know, 50, we're going from 40 up to 50. Most of, I think, most of the proposals you're going to get over the next few years are going to be surface parking. So, you need to have the 50%, because, you know, again, the front of the building, front of the site's going to be the building, the rear's going to be parking. In fact, we saw another proposal recently where it does just that. Buildings in the front, parking lots in the back. I believe they're going to comply with the 50. Somebody wants to go to the expense and do the underground parking, they're going to go above 50. They'll have to present that, again, in the form of a variance, and you may, and you may feel it's appropriate to grant that.
Why does that say you want impervious coverage?
Well, the impervious coverage is 80, that is 85%, and we're not recommending to change that. And then, the main thing, the main issue there, frankly, from a site plan perspective, is how are they going to deal with stormwater? Leave that to the engineers to figure out.
Yeah, and the real important reason we wanted to mention that is because we have a larger development that you'll probably be getting an application for sometime in the next three months or so, that is proposing underground parking. So, we didn't want to, we didn't want to go through a master plan hearing and not change it, and you say, oh my God, they're coming in, and they're at 80%, lot coverage. How could we grant that without mentioning that we discussed it, but we didn't, it was easier for you to understand and not have to worry that we didn't look at it now, so that you had the flexibility, understanding that that 50% really is based on above-ground parking.
The point, the point is, I guess what we're suggesting is, if this developer comes to you, the 50% was there because we were anticipating the parking was going to be in the form of surface parking. We didn't want to create a new standard. So, if this proposal comes in, you know.
It's so magnificent.
If it's so magnificent, and they're providing the parking anyway, you know, so you can review that proposal on its, on its own, not necessarily be locked into.
You just kind of talked about having a flexible parking requirement, so we do that under that.
Well, if they can't do it, they can do it.
What we might do is make some mention in the master plan update that.
That's a good point.
Other ways of handling parking may be considered on a case-by-case basis. So, that in a sense, you have a general justification in the master plan without having written anything into the order.
Gotcha. I, that's a very good idea. I think what it could also say is, I think it should acknowledge, frankly, what we just spoke about, that the 50% building coverage was, was kind of acknowledging, you know, the need for space for surface parking, and that you may get, and the board should consider that on a case-by-case basis, something to that effect. And then, just two more quick things. Mixed, we put in the definition of mixed-use. There is no definition, although mixed-use currently is permitted in the Hamilton Street zone, and is also permitted in the office professional zone, which is, I think the main one I can think of is along Easton Avenue, those converted homes. So, the mixed-use definition, it, in terms of Hamilton Street, it basically says it's, the first floor is commercial, and above is residential or office. That we've discussed, but we did put in here, and I just wanted to point this out, because it's not, frankly, it's not Hamilton Street-specific. In the OP zone, a mixed-use building shall consist of permitted office use and up to two residential units. The reason for that is that the permitted uses currently in the OP zone are, it's one, one, single-family home, a two-family home, office use, and mixed-use. So, we felt it was appropriate, since those are the permitted uses, and the mixed-use is basically a combination of the permitted uses, office on the first floor, up to two units above. So, that's the reason for that.
Your first sentence is, "A building containing one or more principal uses." Well, if it contains only one use, then it's not a mixed-use building.
Exactly.
Don't you mean two or more principal uses?
I think you're right. It would be two. It would be two.
That's a good point, Ted.
One is one, two is two. No, it's mixed.
That's, that's a really good point.
Two typos in one day, he's, he's caught on me.
Second score.
Second score.
Do you want office only on the first floor and the OP?
Yes.
Because it's permitted office use, you, you indicate.
Oh, no, that's.
Okay, and I didn't know if you did.
And then last thing, that's basically it. The one other thing that's in the, it's in here, that's not in the ordinance yet, is there are a bunch of recommendations on the design standards, that's going to be more time-consuming, so that's going to come at a later date. So that is basically it.
Let me ask you a question, the design standards, are they not trying to create a continuous look, are they on the street?
No. No, in fact.
It's not going to have the same facade, the same.
No, no, absolutely not. No, in fact, what, what the recommendations are, is, there actually are a whole slew of design standards in the ordinance already. What we want to do is, frankly, we want to illustrate them more. We want to, really, it's a whole bunch of verbiage, so we want to be able to tell developers, this is what this means, this is what we want.
I saw your sketch today.
And, for example, for example, that's, that's probably the one good sketch that's in there, which shows a typical Main Street storefront. We want to have more illustrations like that to show people what we're talking about.
Yeah, definitely show signage.
It'll show probably typical signage, it does allow.
I was bringing up, it's many, 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 many years ago, who was, I think, Mount Holly, I lived in Mount Holly on the station, I'm a lawyer, and they had this big thing going on in Mount Holly to do their Main Street, and every, every business on Main Street was supposed to design and build a facade on their buildings, because it was a colonial, you know, we're talking in the 50s. It didn't work.
Yeah.
Because most of the building, most of the owners said, get lost, you know, it didn't work.
Princeton has severe restrictions on signage.
Yes, they do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I.
I could kind of like that, but again, they were trying to make everybody do a colonial front, because they, you know, it's a colonial's town, and they wanted that whole colonial look down there, Main Street. And a few businesses, I was only in airports, I was just, wasn't even thinking about it, except I remember, because it created such a hue and crow in the town. Shop, shop owners, you know, some of them were in favor, fine, wonderful, now the guys, you know, a little, little barbershop, I couldn't afford to, to change this facade and make it into a colonial village.
Vince, what do you need from us for tonight, by the way? Because I, I think we brought this up, so we can go into.
All, all, the only reason we brought it up is because we want to schedule it for the, a master plan hearing, and typically, before we schedule something for a master plan hearing, we make sure that you're all comfortable. The last time we met, we talked about all these different concepts that are in here, and now that it's in the master plan update in ordinance form, you, instead of it in the concept, you actually get to see it in black and white. So if you're pretty much okay with everything, after we make some of these little tweaks we talked about, we can schedule it for a master plan hearing, have that, and then put the ordinance on the council for, for their adoption, and move forward.
Okay. Sounds good. Is everyone comfortable with that? That we're, that we're there, to the extent that we can do that?
Now, we have to do.
Yes, we have to do the executive session for the fair share plan, so I make a motion that we.
We have to do a resolution.
Oh, for what, this?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we have to do a resolution, go into executive session.
Oh, to resolve.
So, what do you do?
I haven't read this detail.
We want a motion, then a resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right? Isn't that how we should do it? Make the motion, however you think is.
And that, that's fine, we can essentially, we'll be make, be making a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing litigation. There's a form resolution there, I believe it's the same form that was adopted at your last meeting, that you then move on the form of the resolution.
I make such a motion.
Second.
This is just a motion to go in, right?
Yeah.
So they can do that by acclamation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then.
The resolution, I'll call the roll.
Huh? On this?
Yeah, the resolution, I'll call the roll.
So I make a motion to, uh, pass a resolution to go into executive session for the fair